First.
Is it the demo lecture two?
Yes, the demo lecture two is one of our programs. Yeah, we have three additional properties. Top twenty-four, that we have.
Justin, are you ready to do?
Yeah.
And just don't leave me. You make sure those doors are open to get in. It's required.
He may start.
Hmm?
He was giving a check there, but we're giving him a start.
Yeah, good. Start it.
Yeah.
Here, we'll call the Jefferson Township Board of Trustees work session to order. Today is October fourth?
Fifth.
Fifth, October the fifth. Would you all stand for the place of the agents at the time six oh one P M.
We can testify, United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, in this court with liberty and justice for all.
This time like to have a moment of silence on the military firefighters, road workers, and sheriff deputies as they serve our community here and abroad. We'll call them sideways.
Tracy Mayer?
Yes.
Tracy. Tracy McQuarrie?
Present.
Tracy McQuarrie?
Present.
We have Coram present. Good. Just these, uh, does anybody have any objection to getting the fire and the zoning report out of the way before we get into the agenda? Both these individuals have scheduled conflict with a regular meeting. Any objections?
One for me.
All right. Chief Wright, you're up.
Okay, for your information, we're not going public with this until about another month. We just notified this afternoon that, um, through Firehouse Subs, they have ordered us a Lucas chest compression system and external power supply valued at thirteen thousand three hundred seventy-five dollars and eighty cents. This is due chest compressions on cardiac arrest. It's a lot simpler than what we have at present time. Uh, we gotta notify the media and send these people a copy of the media publicity that went out for this war. Damn, I should drop the class.
They'll let you go.
I was retired. Okay, my question to you Tracy on the, uh, new exification equipment and the annuals. If we don't get these ordered, then we're going to lose the due grants and we will not be able to purchase through FEMA, get a FEMA grant for five years. So what I'm asking is, what can we do to get the purchase orders for these two? And we only pay like five percent.
We don't have the money yet. Where's the grant money? And the grandpa is supposed to be getting the grant money. Oh, we have an award that says, congratulations, your application has been accepted. That's all I have. We don't have any money, so I can't write a purchase order until we get money.
Did you make any contacts or?
She did, no, she sent me, um, she sent me, um, the packages, but that's, that was it. I don't know who she's been talking to. No, that's the only communication I have.
You gonna be here tomorrow?
Um, no. I have another meeting tomorrow.
Thursday?
Thursday, if possible.
If you're gonna be here, I'll come down there and we'll call her. Get away from the horse's mouth. We gotta get moving if we lose it.
So there's, that's the thing, is she's gotta write the grant, then they get it, then they direct the deposit into our checking account, and then I write the purchase order, trustees approve, um, her disorder and the money.
Well, the money comes directly from FEMA.
Right, and goes into our checking account.
Yes.
Right, but we don't have that part yet. That's the grant writer, he's supposed to direct the grant, so we get the money.
Okay, we'll call her Thursday. We'll talk to her. The other thing, within the department, we only have the one captain. I'm trying to build the morale. We went from twenty-eight people up to about fifty-seven people right now. And we got some more applications. That's when we come in. Let's see. Okay, the, I want to promote, um, one, the, our only captain we had, Chris White, I wanted to promote him up to a full timeization. I had a maintenance, that way we've cut down some of the maintenance on the apparatus. And the, uh, annuals is, we're trying to fix some by ourselves, but he's more panically inclined to do this. And he's been on the department for several years. He's a hell of a good guy. And I like to, uh, since, uh, oh, what was his name, Randy? Since he's not there anymore, uh, I like to put Chris in his position to do maintenance, records, and help with a lot of the big work we have in the office. And the kid's good. And he's volunteered to. The other thing, uh, I want to point at our awards banquet, which all of your invite also. Promote one firefighter to the rank of captain and appoint five others to the rank of lieutenant. We got more structure this way within the department, especially of evening times, weekends, and, uh, I'm not there, or Chris is not there. Right now, we have one lieutenant and he won't purchase anymore. And I've already given him a X. We expect a lot out of our people to run, help pick up slack, but he's got two other jobs and I don't know what his problem is. I don't wanna ask you, but I want to, uh, promote five to rank lieutenant. And, uh, better training, we're gonna start on hydrant inspections tomorrow. We started that last fall. Zep Whitleak and a couple of went out, but everybody's move out tomorrow. Flush hydrants, which they have to flush over. We found two hydrants that was not working. We found two hydrants that's in a wooded area. So, uh, we're gonna do that tomorrow.
The hydrants aren't working, you know who the owner is and who's contacted, do you say the native of Texas Regional will have a check?
Yes, we have.
Okay, good.
There, we have three hydrants on Business Park, two out of the three was not working.
Okay.
Montgomery County government and, uh, got one working. Okay, I.
How you doing?
Do you have any problem with the move? Because that'll be a better structure for the department. And we got a lot of new people. We got rid of, uh, thirteen people last year because it was just that way. Start trouble working in the department. The overall atmosphere in the department is one hundred percent better.
I have questions. Do you, I, the, um, salary, line, I don't, they quote this promotion?
There's not gonna be any. No increase in salary.
Oh, no increase in salary.
Just the title.
Just title?
Yes. Now.
But, but they're being increased from part-time to full-time, no?
No, Chris White is wanting to be the only one. And like I said, he's wanting to be taking Randy's place, what Randy used to do.
So does that mean you wanna use that particular line on? If so, I don't think there's any money on that line.
Well, we might work on that to type.
Yeah, okay. I just want you to realize that when you do this, we gotta look at the budget.
Sure, sure, read it up. And get a, create a part-time position like the firefighters in the MS are now as administrative assistants. I've got three, we're in the middle of three lawsuits right now. We're the middleman because of accidents that happen, try to drag us in the middle. But, um, we need somebody at the front desk to answer the phones there. But they're just gonna be on part-time basis. And we, we might be able to use one of our own people for that. Do some typing and stuff.
So again, at the budget, we're gonna look at that a little bit.
Right. I was looking what you wanted. And that's... Oh, on the, the new engine tanker. Do we have to come up with?
As a trustee, you gotta talk to them about that part.
Where's the point on the new engine tanker? Since it's drug out this far, it's gonna be twenty twenty-three before we get it now. It was twenty twenty-two, but the longer it draws out, the longer it takes to make. There are some parts that they're having hard time getting because of the ships sitting in, in the Gulf floating around. And not enough people to unload at the shipping docks. But I wanna know how, uh, where we're going with, with that, on ordering that. Because the people in the, in the south of it promise, uh, we'd get an engine tanker. Roy, you know this. We're working on that. He ordered something at, I think, last meeting. But we need to get, uh, the process off the ball so we can get the paperwork signed and get it ordered, because like I said, twenty twenty-three, unless there's a miracle.
So you're working off the six hundred and eight days? It was, it's a big work that came through a week ago. Let the timing be moved out.
Yes. And there's a possibility that, that if you start getting parts on a regular basis, then we might be able to move it up a little bit, but... When I was over there a month ago, to, to the factory, Roy was there, I think a month, month and a half.
Yeah.
David's had an hard time then with parts. Everybody's had an hard time with parts. So, um, I just wanted to know when we could get this on the road.
So we need a resolution to be able to proceed on with the paperwork. Can I, can I take an initiative, rewrite resolutions so we can get the, uh, decide which financing option we want and assign the purchase agreement? I am. To find myself to write a, get the resolution going so we can get that. We've got to get that, once we have the, we have to pick out a financing option. There's three of them suggested by the financing institution we've got to email from. Pick one of those, sign on that, and then sign the purchase agreement, and then the date starts and we'll have a finish date. But start date and the finish date. We have to have the paperwork to sub and then we can proceed on.
Would it be the same institution that you're using now for the annuals?
No.
Different?
Yeah, correct.
Because that part's not believed, that's why I just asked it.
Okay, yes. So, as I said, I was kinda worried that, um, it wouldn't be going on, so I passed the resolution out. The resolution is written for tonight's meeting to talk about it, talk about it after this in the work session, and get moving on.
Okay, thank you. But other than that, that's... Oh, also, November the fourth, six o'clock, you're all invited to an awards ceremony. We've been working extremely hard because.
Here, right? In January? It's here, right? Okay, yeah.
Uh, this is the first time that Jefferson Township's had anything like this. We've got a couple of MCs that will let us know about the... So, uh...
We've had, we've had dinners with fire department. Oh, no, 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 you're right.
Yeah, we did, but it wasn't awards.
Wouldn't have worked, but you, I'm sorry, I'm thinking Christmas day or something. You're right, I'm sorry.
We're getting, uh, we're getting people, um, everybody's gonna get one thing, it's gonna be a life for the people. And then, um, the trustees, Tracy, will get about the same thing, uh, no charge. But we wanna show our appreciation to you people and to the, uh, to your families of what we tried to do for you and, uh, the protection. And we got one, one company that wants to put some monetary value towards this. So I think it's gonna be pretty nice.
Thank you.
Justin, zoning report, please.
This is the zoning administrator's report, October fifth, twenty twenty-one. In the last month, I received a number of new documents, everything from single-family residents, public lines, the school, that new towns, um, uh, industrial outbuilding for Clean Water, three hundred Cherokee. I sent over a hundred and four properties to the road department for being vacant. Usual phone calls, emails, residents complaints, questions, gratification, and submission of application. Uh, our zoning commission has scheduled to meet on October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one to consider a rezoning request for sixty-two eighty-five Sherman Town Pike. Uh, Montgomery County planning commission heard the case at their September meeting, and they recommended denial due to spot rezoning. Uh, the township zoning commission will hear the case before making their recommendation to the trustee. They probably have that next month, uh, after they get their recommendation. Continue to manage coenforcement workload, and I have a working vehicle to do that. I, I don't have that right now, but I'm trying to stay on top of all of those depending on the returns. Uh, and then I compiled a list with Chief Wright, uh, with three additional properties that were identified at the last dangerous property meeting, um, by the residents that were there. Uh, we've added those and we can do that now if you wanted to, or whatever you wanted to do, that officially add those to our zoning list, but we've got to restart the process of getting the, uh, just, uh, need to demolish those.
I'm thinking, John, for, uh, for, uh, to my, I, I, I got a question. I, I got a question for you. So you're doing, um, uh, code enforcement also in lieu of Tony's job?
Trying to, yeah.
I got a call from the residents, um, they said they've been trying to call the office and can't get a response, um, it's a house on Hagan?
Forty-nine hundred for the school bus?
Yeah. Yes, okay, so you aware of that?
Yeah, notice a violation was issued last week for that. Uh, from what I understand, the property is vacant.
Yes.
So we're probably gonna have to have, have the bus towed off the property depending on what we have.
The bus is not plated, right? It's pretty good shape.
Yes, yeah, it, it doesn't have, doesn't have any markings belonging to any kind of school district, so our zoning code treats that as recreational vehicle and has to be stored as such, but without a plate on it, it has to, it's gonna be removed.
So you're telling me though, if they do plate that, they can still put that in that area?
They have to put it all the way back in on a paved surface, so behind the front wall of the house, no closer than ten feet to the public right of way, and projecting into the rear yard only, so it can't be anywhere where it is now, projecting into the front yard, so.
Okay, so you have seen the property?
Yes.
So the pile of trash out front, could we not, and I tried to get a hold of the landowner, the landowner lives in the township also.
Oh, okay.
And I went to their house and it looked apparent that nobody lived there.
Okay.
Uh, been there three times, and then so today I talked to some neighbors.
Okay.
And they informed me, no, somebody lives there, they're only there a little bit every week, they finally cut the grass, I'm not sure what it is, but I have a contact name, but I'm sure you look that up too, the legal owner of that.
Yeah.
Legal owner of the house there lives in the township also.
Yes, yeah.
But if we can get in contact with the legal owner, can we not, in a polite way, you call, and I got the number here, the dating trash, and they told me, I talked to them, they, this, they, if, if the owner calls me Monday or Tuesday, Thursday, which isn't gonna happen now.
Right.
We pick up in that area on Fridays.
Okay.
They would, they would pick up our stuff up out front.
I would think they would, yeah.
Yeah, so it saves us from our road department cleaning the mess up, try to save us a few tax dollars if we can politely find out and talk to the landowner and get them to call, because you know, the person, the tenant moved out and let all their, hmm, out front.
Right.
So, okay, anyway, glad to know about it, and appreciate you moving forward with it. Like you're nice.
Justin, did you say there was a zoning code that says, says that about buses?
Yes, buses that are not, in service, that buses are treated as recreational vehicles.
And that's the township or is that just the town?
That's the township, that's, that's the best. And then, did you wanna do the dangerous properties to add the three to the list officially? Just open the dangerous.
Do you have the resolution for the next meeting to get on it now?
Okay, so we'll do that back on then. That's fine, I, I just had it, I, I had it to see, I didn't know if we were gonna do it now or if we were gonna do it.
We can't do this, it's a work session. You, if you have the paperwork, we can do it here at seven o'clock in the meeting, you won't be here, can we do it that night?
Yeah, I won't be here for that, but, yeah, we can do it next time, that's fine. That's fine, go ahead and next time.
Any other zoning questions? Okay, next on the, uh, agenda, we've got, uh, ambulance and rescue tools, that's, I think we covered that with the chief's report. Just please, do you have anything to add to that discussion?
Um, well, the, you said ambulance and rescue tools, no.
Okay, next is the, uh, engine tanker purchase.
Okay, so, just take a minute, go over, um, I'm not sure what the next resolution number is, but, um, the main resolution, uh, the Jefferson Township Board of Trustees to hereby agree to finance the fire department's engine backslash tanker purchased in resolution twenty-one dash oh seven one through the lease financing proposal presented by leasing two incorporated with option number, and the options are on the second page, so, I don't know if you only read the resolution, you've read that yourself, um, another thing to take note in there, uh, the, to, to, forth where it asks down, um, whereas Jefferson Township Board of Trustees who hereby also agreed to make the trustee over to the fire department, who are manned, appoint a contact with sub them going forward. So we've been told by legal that we need to have one person involved for that, so I put it in the resolution, might as well have the trustee that's over the fire department be the contact for that. Okay, word?
Okay.
So then, on the second page, it has the three options, um, presented by, uh, so lease financing proposal is actually presented by a company called Leasing Two. That is the company that sub and uses the most, uh, how can I go buy a car at, at dealership? They have certain people and suggestions and people that know there, whatever, so, um, you can see, see the three options there. Myself, uh, going over this, I am leaning at the present moment to option three.
Why? Did you talk to the rep, did he walk you through it?
Uh, no, I, I got my, I got in trouble for talking to them, uh, myself, so I'm gonna answer that question. We were given this information two weeks ago, that, um, we were told in the meeting that, uh, there was several people that are gonna contact them next morning. I waited till late in the day to contact them, and no, we had not heard from Jeffersons, and I told them they were awarded the contract, and they said, thank you, and they was, and they sent this, this paperwork that we had in front of us to us, and it was forwarded to you two trustees, and we had this almost two weeks now. A day or day, you're too shy in two weeks, so at that time, we'll get it.
I guess trustee McGlaughlin, I'm not getting disputed, you need to give this thing why. What I am disputing is, in every other meeting, you advocated three bids. You've even taken it to legal. You argued vigorously in the meetings. We got one finance proposal.
So get three options off.
It's not three proposals. And considering the fact that we're talking about six hundred and fifty-three thousand, I think we need to look at a separate finance quote. I wanted to see some numbers from the vendor that financed our ambulances, so.
And start that process. You've had this, if you, you've had this for two weeks, if you thought that way, why didn't you reach out to the company and get the proposals written like this? Needs to be moving on.
Well, it wasn't on the agenda until you walked into this here. However, uh, the other trustees are comfortable with spending that kind of money without a competitive bid, and they'll just have to outbid me. Now, I spoke with the rep from that company to get some clarification on some of the terms. One of the things that they said, and it's in their paperwork, the very bottom, matter of fact, it's on the back of what he gave us, important, a resolution will be required. They're recommending their paperwork, so this looks like a resolution you wrote, correct? Not their resolution.
Yes, I did. If you have these problems, you've had this paperwork for two weeks, why haven't you done something about it? You went to the mic and reading and jumped like this.
Well, when you called, when you called sub initially, you told them to only work with you.
No, I did not tell them that.
I am the one who told.
I did not say that, you fool and manure.
Oh, really?
Sorry.
So then you go and complain in the prosecutor's office about me getting involved with it. The whole reason I got involved with it was the meeting to discuss the financing, the day after the meeting, the man and wolf, didn't happen. So I asked the fire chief, what's the progress on that? He says, they have not been notified, so I called sub to see what's going on, and I said, oh, we already talked to trustee McGlaughlin, he said, send everything to you. Well, we took care of that, all the trustees being notified, and that's why that email came out to all of us, Mr. McGlaughlin. So it's great, we're gonna take credit for the purchase.
I'm not taking credit for anything, I'm trying to, trying to get this thing going, moving, is anybody else taking the?
Well, you already did several meetings up to that point.
Nobody else taking, and nobody else taking initiative to get this thing going?
That's my block.
Yes, please.
Why are you, uh, option three, fire team, option three?
I guess because. I guess because it's the least amount of annual payment. Knowing the amount that I was told back in the day, that I would kind of, the fire budget should come out, and I know what we had in previous, uh, fire budgets, reserve, or capital expenses, and this amount is under that considerable amount, and still have money to pay for other things we already have obligations to. That's why I picked that one. And we can go up to, is, did, did ten years or twelve years we can finance?
Twelve.
We can finance up to twelve, so we can go longer than that if we wish to. That's the three options we have, they'll give us. Trying to get this thing going, so we can get a start date and a stop date and get to our commitment.
But do you want something, you're just gonna go with one quote versus everybody else has to get three to five quotes and clear with everybody you know? So, now, gentlemen, since I did take the time to talk to the leasing company and have a background in finance, something to be aware of. I was a little worried about a nine-year agreement, just because we don't know what the funding picture looks like. That's a heck of a long time for money, money to come in, uh, profit count on property taxes. However, there's a feature in these leases called an appropriation clause. Do you know what that is?
Tell me.
That means if we do not appropriate the money for this payment, we can just walk away from it and turn it in. So we lost funding, so if you guys want to roll the dice on this and think it's a good deal, we do have an out via the appropriations clause. But I think we're in a position to wait, call a meeting in five days to get some finance and get the resolution correct and make sure that this is a solid deal. Yes, they have a relationship with Sudden. It is two-point-two-nine percent money, up to two-point-five-six money. But if you go shopping for a car, you shop against the banks. They don't, you don't take the first deal they throw on the desk. But, uh, and since we're already two years out, I don't think another couple of days before we order this is really gonna make that much of a difference. So, if you guys wanna vote it through in a river meeting, that's fine. But that's what, uh, the research that I have has come up on that. Gentlemen, any other discussion on fire truck?